All right, it is now 6:30. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with item one, which is a roll call. I don't, Carrie Farina, I don't think she's on. No, Joe?
Joe Glenda Hebron.
Thank you. Gabe?
Gabe Marks Hebron.
Thank you. Eric?
Eric Shetland, Andover.
Thank you. Mary?
Mary Kojewski Marlborough.
Thank you. Pam?
Pam Farrington Marlborough.
Great, thank you. Mike?
Mike Sharon Hebron.
Thank you. Kirsten? I think you're on mute.
Kirsten Erlenson Andover.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue Stolfe Marlborough.
Great, thank you. And Heather?
Heather Summerson Hebron.
Great, and Mike Morris Hebron. I forgot, I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right there.
Oh, right in front of you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so bear with me, we'll move on to item three, public comment. Hebron, Andover, and Marlborough, community engagement and attendance at Board of Education's public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. And Gabe, if I could lean on you to just keep track of course, thank you. So at this time, is there anyone present that would like to give a public comment? Physically present? No? Okay, is there anyone online that would like to give a public comment, please? Just raise your digital hand or make yourself known, otherwise known. Nobody? Okay, I'm getting the left and right from Eric, so we'll move on to item four, which is any additions or deletions to the agenda item. This time, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda item that would like to be proposed by any of the board members? Seeing none here, anyone online? Okay? Yes, I would do that, thank you, sorry. And Mr. McNamara just reminded me, just for reference, if you go to item 10 in the agenda, there's a minor typo, it's not material for the meeting, but if you look the fourth number bullet down, should read 10.4 instead of, it reads 10.1. The subbullets all read, you know, 4.8, 4.9, but just for, just so you don't get confused on where we are in the meeting, just go ahead and make a note to change that to 10.4 in your, your own copy. All right, that brings us to the Board of Education Chair Report. So I think the convocation, is that right? Convocation is coming up here very shortly, we'll have teachers back in the building and very shortly after that, students. I unfortunately cannot participate in the convocation this year, which I feel terrible about, but there's a family obligation that prevents me from doing so. So the thing that I would just share ahead of time, and hopefully the teachers and everyone else, the staff will all get this for what it's worth, it's not a whole lot different than last year. I mean, the, our, our challenge is, is it's not about what goes on in the classrooms. I mean, if you look at all the statistics for our school, we do very well when our kids are in the classroom and teachers are teaching and staff is supporting. It's all, just trying to maintain the safety and the distractions on the outside of the classrooms. And so I would just reiterate to everybody, when it comes to safety, you know, when that bites you is when everybody stops paying attention to it. It's just one of those things that is, it's perishable and if you're not paying attention or if you let your foot off the gas pedal for a moment, if you, you don't, you let your guard down, that's when, that's when we have safety issues and security issues. And, you know, like I said last year, it's, it's not so much about, you know, any one individual making a mistake or we just need to be picking each other up, you know, it's, it's human nature to get lethargic about, you know, a security scenario for days and weeks and months on end. And the only way you kind of get through that is by, you know, everybody just looking out for each other, you see something, say something, question something that doesn't look right. It's always easy to resolve something from a position of you looked into it versus letting it go by and not having said something. I just, we would be very remiss if we just didn't pay attention to the fact that in other schools, in other parts of the country, and even here within Connecticut, we've had, you know, terrible things that have happened and we don't want that here. And then the only other thing I would say is that, you know, last year was rough. We had, you know, the first part of, of the year started off with some, you know, frankly unpleasant and terrible things that went on. And I think that the students, the staff, the administration, the Board, to the extent that we were involved in it, all did what I think was appropriate to do and continues to do that. And I think we made some progress, just making sure that we're being respectful towards everybody that's here in the school and looking out for each other. And I would hope that we can capitalize that and keep moving it forward and I'm confident that everybody involved will be doing that. So I think that's all I have.
All right, great. So I just have a few things that I wanted to mention with regards to the superintendent's report. But first and foremost is, welcome to the new Board of Education space. I'm really pleased with the way it turned out. We've got a little bit of sunlight behind us, but it's not going to be an issue, obviously, within the next month and a half. And I think it's a much, the space is much more conducive for the meetings that we're going to have, much more professional, and it also is going to be something that benefits students, which I know is important to the Board as well. So I'm super excited about it and I want to thank Eric and Chris who are over there manning the controls, Scott Budston and our facilities team for making sure that it was set up so great, it just turned out really, really well. So thank you for all that work. And to that end, I just want to continue along the line of recognizing the work that is done during the summer months. So I'm starting, I think, my 27th year in education, my 23rd as a 12-month administrator, and I can't tell you how many times in those 23 years when I say, I tell people that I worked during the summer, they're shocked, they, well, you work for a school district? Do you, what do you work during the summer for? But I can't express enough the magnitude of work that is done. There's so much, I'll use the term heavy lifting that is done during this really truncated period of time, you know, from our facilities and maintenance department later on in the meeting, and within your board packet, there is a comprehensive list of the summer projects that were completed. And Michael Schleyhauffer and his team are obviously intimately involved in all those things and working with and arranging for contractors to come in and do a lot of, of things. And again, I'll recognize them later, but I want to make sure that I mention them. Obviously, our administrative team is here all summer as well, you know, really doing a lot of work to prepare for the 28th, which is when we have convocation, as well as obviously the 31st, which is an exciting day when the students return. All of our 12-month staff, I don't want to miss anybody, I want to talk about our secretaries and clerical staff who are, you know, often thought of as the backbone of the school and making sure that, you know, all the things are done with regards to scheduling and parent communication and just, there's so much stuff that happens in our front offices. Eva and her accounting team are doing things like, you know, making sure that we have all the necessary materials and resources to actually operate and function. And, and, you know, it's just, there's a lot of stuff that goes on during the summer and I just want to thank all of those people that are involved and hopefully I didn't miss anybody because it has been a very busy summer. And I'll just conclude my report with saying, I'm excited about the new year. You know, education is a unique field in the sense of there is a clear stop to every year and a clear opening to every year. And I've always found that to be a unique thing about working in this field because it's an opportunity for a fresh start. And certainly, you know, the challenges that you alluded to that we had to navigate last year, I'm not saying we won't face other challenges, hopefully nothing to that magnitude, but it is an opportunity for a fresh start and I hope to be able to continue, you know, as a first-year superintendent last year, I think that some things went well and I also think that there are some things that could be improved upon. And I think that I'm, again, I'm excited about the opportunity to build upon those things that I think went well for us and me specifically, and improve upon those things that need to be improved upon, so ready for year two and I'm excited about it. So that's what I wanted to say.
All right, that's handled. All right, item seven, approval of the minutes. So if we will go to 7.1, and I'll go ahead and entertain motions here to get them out on the floor and then if there's any discussion, we can do that. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular June 12th and the special July 17th Board of Education meetings. Thank you.
Second, Gabe Marks.
Thank you, Gabe. All right, is there any discussion about the minutes? Okay, hearing none, then we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries unanimously, which brings us to item eight, which is the consent agenda and resignation letters of Cecilia, I'm going to say this wrong, Devilla? Okay, and Megan Stillwell. And again, I'll put a motion on the board, motion to, entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Yeah, to approve the consent.
Consent agenda.
Correct, you got it.
Yeah. Thank you, Heather. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael, Mike. Is there any discussion?
Wish them well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, yeah.
Appreciate their contributions and wish them all the best.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion also carries, which brings us to item number nine, which is old business and 9.1, which is the update on the irrigation well project.
So I specifically wanted to include this as a separate agenda item. As I said earlier, there is an agenda item where we're going to discuss summer facilities projects update. This is within that list, but I felt that this was one that we have been, this was a special summer project because this was a special summer project that really brought a resolution to an issue that we started to contend with last fall, when our irrigation well for several of our athletic fields went from, I think, about a 30 to 35 gallon per minute yield to about a six gallon per minute yield, the well ran dry. And it has been a, quite a road we've traveled down in order to get to where we've been. We did an initial fracking of that well, the yield didn't increase that much, we did a drilling of a second well, which didn't yield the results that we were hoping for, then we fracked that well, and essentially, we are in a good place right now. So where we are is we've tied those two wells together, we're averaging about 30 gallons per minute for a yield, which is sufficient to provide irrigation to those athletic fields, which is obviously a crucial element for, for moving forward in any way, shape, or form with our fields projects that we've been discussing at length for the past year. So I just, I just felt that it was something that deserved a separate agenda item and I'm very excited that we have gotten to the place where we are. So, and I just want to thank the members of the facility subcommittee who has helped navigate through this, as well as the entire Board for their support in helping us get through this issue. So it's a good resolution, a good outcome.
Not that I know anything about it, but was it the fracking of the second well or was it just the general rain?
No, it's, it was the fracking of the second well. One of the things, I mean, I've learned so much about this.
We all have.
You know, where basically, you'd think you get a ton of rain this, this summer and that's really helped with the ground, but that doesn't really have any impact.
No impact whatsoever.
Months and months and months and months for it to get into those aquifers and make any difference.
All right, okay.
Yeah, I just, I want to second what Colin said. Michael Schleyhauffer and others involved, obviously, in the administration did a fantastic job juggling and dealing with bad news on a regular basis when it came to the well drilling. It was always, what is our backup plan going to be? And I think that foresight gave us the opportunity to look ahead and have options available to this, so it really was an excellent.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the board? Which brings us to 9.2, which is a second reading of the following policies. First up is 5215, the student dress red line and final copy, which would be enclosure 9.2A and enclosure 9.2B in the, in the, in your, your packet. So again, let's put a motion out and then if there's any discussion, we can certainly have a discussion. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve policy 5125, student dress as presented. Thank you, Eric. Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. Okay, any discussion?
This policy, of the policies that I've been on the subcommittee and that we've looked at for updating, I would say that this was the trickiest one. There, there's a sensitivity there, there is a variety of philosophies could be applied. And we attempted to get input and volume from the administration here. It's difficult to say that we have made the perfect document yet. I think that we've got a much improved document. And, you know, now we live with it for a while and see if there is more to be done in the future. But I think for, for the purposes of approving a document that has been changed quite a lot, reflects a lot of input, and it encloses the best knowledge that we have today, I think that we've succeeded in doing that. And Colin, Hugh, have any supporting comments?
Yeah, you know, this is, to echo Eric's sentiment, there's been more conversation about policy changes to this particular policy than certainly any one that I've been involved with in my year here in the district. You know, this is something that I, I'm happy with the outcome, I think that it meets the needs of the different stakeholders that were involved in the conversations. I will tell you as well that I've not had as many sets of eyes reviewing the policy to, to make sure that I am not making a decision in a bubble or making, you know, expressing opinions that have not been validated. I have worked closely and appreciate so much the support of building administrations like Dr. Serusi, Dr. Bricegall, Mr. Mater, Ms. Bell, Ms. Pomeranz, they, they've spent a great deal of time meeting and talking and reviewing this. Dr. Serusi and I were talking about it earlier today, you know, long before I came to RAM, the topic of having, making sure that we had a dress policy that was equitable and that was not discriminative, I'm sorry, discriminatory against anybody based off of a protected class, a body type, was something that I know that they, the administrative team has talked about for some time. I, I don't want to speak for Dr. Serusi, but it's one of those things that I think just kept getting, kind of through nobody's fault, maybe the pandemic had something to do with it, it just continued to get kicked down the line. So when it came up and, you know, we were able to identify a policy that kind of seemed to meet our needs and we've had a lot of conversations about it. So I appreciate the policy subcommittee's involvement in this process, Heather Summers' participation, Sue Stolfe's participation, and certainly everybody that's had a voice in the, at the table around us.
Any other report members?
I just have a question. Do we, before, but do we routinely have new policy reviewed by any people?
Absolutely. So that's one group that I didn't mention and absolutely was involved with this, is we wanted to make sure that there was not any potential legal issues that we run into. So once the policy was drafted, before it went to the policy subcommittee, it was reviewed by one of the attorneys from Shipman and Goodwin, who I do a lot of policy work with, who ultimately greenlit the policy the way it was. Yep. Sorry.
And I, this is real, this 9.2B is just the clean version of this.
Yes, correct. Just, it shows you the markup from where.
Yeah.
Anyone else comment? Yeah, so the thing that, when, when this came up, there's some potential sensitivities around it, as Mr. McNamara alluded to and Eric has also, you know, kind of pointed out. I think the thing that I was concerned about foremost and foremost when it comes to any one of these policies is, at the end of the day, it's just what do we have to do to ensure that we have a circumstance in every classroom where we can conduct classroom business because that's really what it's all about. And I, so I know there's different stakeholders and there's different, you talk about philosophies but issues at hand and, you know, there's an argument for first, first amendment speech, there's an argument for free expression as far as students having the ability to kind of wear what they want to wear, but also at the end of the day, do we want to turn our, our administrators and our teaching staff and our support staff into, you know, the dress code police? And then, you know, finally, and least, but, you know, last but not least, you know, at the end of the day, what students wear, in my opinion, my one board member opinion, is frankly a parent's responsibility. And so, but those are all kind of coming from different angles and different perspectives. And as I read through this policy no less than three times today, just making sure that I didn't miss something that I thought similar to Mr. McNamara's concerns about either overlooking or, or assuming that one particular opinion was, was missing or, or that might, you know, I wasn't, I wasn't missing something in it. I, I didn't see anything either. I think, I think Derek's point, I think is as good as we can make it based on what we have right now, given the input that we got from a lot of different stakeholders. Maybe it's not perfect and maybe we'll have to adjust it down the road, but it feels pretty good. So that's my two cents.
And one thing I feel to mention here is, I think another element is that people express themselves with their appearance, adults and children, and this wasn't an attempt to, to control people expressing themselves, only expressing themselves in a clearly negative way.
Agreed. Go ahead, Sue.
Yeah, I, I want to say thank you very much. I did like the collaboration around this. It was nice to be invited, to be welcomed in on the discussion, especially the administration's viewpoint. This is long overdue, so it, years. So I am very pleased with the work that was done. I, you know, I have mixed feelings still about it, but I do understand everyone's points of view and I know it was very hard to get to this point. And I think we all worked very well together and respected everyone's opinions and thoughts and we all came together with this policy. So I just want to really thank, you know, the board members and the administration for getting us here and hopefully this is something that we all can live with for a little bit because it's a, it's a hard topic, so I don't want to talk about this again for another couple of years. So, so thank you.
Yeah. All right, there's no other comments? Concerns, questions? All right, then we'll put it to a voice vote, all in favor? Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And I just, to capitalize on what Sue just said, the one thing that was, you know, I think this policy committee in general does a good job with this, and so do the other subcommittees, but this was one where it took a lot of input and there was a lot of potential unhappiness that could come out of it. And I think the reason that that didn't happen was because of the level of collaboration and I, that's, that was pretty significant and exceptional and I, so kudos to the policy committee and everybody else that joined and participated and thank you for managing, navigating those pretty tough waters, appreciate that. Okay, which brings us to 5112, which is the school attendance red line and final copy, enclosures 9.2C and enclosures 9.2D. We'll go ahead and put a motion on the table and then certainly discuss that as well. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve policy 5112, school attendance as presented.
So moved. Sue Stolfe.
Is there a second? Thank you, Heather. All right, is there any discussion?
I'll just, I'll just make mention of this and really what I'm about to say is going to be applicable not only to the attendance policy, but also to the two remaining policies that are on the agenda. Basically, these are some of the policies that have been recommended for change to make sure that they are aligned with current legislation. As the Board knows, we had an audit done of our, of our policy handbook last year and when we reviewed the different policies, we thought about ones that we really wanted to update sooner rather than later and the ones that, the student attendance, the student discipline, and student nondiscrimination were three of the ones that we really felt compelled to make sure that we got to sooner rather than later. So I probably won't speak again to the other policies because as I said, this is, the language has been reviewed by building administration, the language has also, the changes that are being put in are recommended specifically from Shipman and Goodwin, our attorney. And again, we want to make sure that we are in compliance and up to date with current legislation with our policy to the extent that we're able.
Any other comment? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, which brings us to 5114, the student in-school suspension, suspension and expulsion red line and final copy, which is our enclosure 9.2E and enclosure 9.2F. We'll entertain a motion. I would entertain a motion to approve policy 5114, student in-school suspension, suspension and expulsion as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Heather. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sue. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well, which brings us to 5500, nondiscrimination students, red line and final copy, which is enclosures 9.2G and enclosure 9.2H. We'll entertain the motion to approve policy 5500, nondiscrimination students as presented. Thank you, Mary. Is there a second? Eric, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll have a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously as well. And I will just, as we close out talking about policy here in this item, I would just like to say thank you to the policy committee in general, to Mr. McNamara's point, that that audit generated a similar avalanche of new work that needed to be done from a policy perspective, similar to the avalanche of work that the audit that we do to generate the capital improvement, you know, kind of butt plan and how, especially the, the facilities committee is constantly working on those kind of things. And so I don't think everybody completely understands the amount of extra work that goes on, that isn't necessarily just these meetings and then, yeah, all the extra meetings that go on to make that happen. And I really appreciate all your effort from both of those committees on, on, and moving us forward and these kind of things. And this policy stuff has been definitely long overdue, there's things in there that are years old to Sue Stolfe's point that need addressing. So this is, this is a pretty healthy share of policy to tackle in such a short time. So I appreciate all that work. Which brings us to item 10, which is new business and item 10.1, stable funds, child nutrition program, enclosures 10.1A.
So enclosing your board packet is a document that is, that outlines what stable funds are, just for everybody's understanding. Stable stands for the state transition assistance for breakfast and lunch expenses. And so as the Board knows, over the past couple of years, free lunch has been offered to schools, by schools across the state as a result of the global pandemic. The Board may recall that last year, where there was a very small window of time where the funding for free breakfast and lunch for students eclipsed and went away and then the state was able to find funding to continue to support that. And we were able to implement that back here at RAM and I think that certainly it'd be hard to argue that it's a bad thing to do to offer an opportunity, you know, it's, you know, having proper nutrition is a huge foundation for learning and, and I, I just think that it was a good opportunity for us to continue that for students. That, the funds for that, for, for free breakfast and lunch eclipsed at the conclusion of the 22-23 school year. And we were going into this summer thinking that lunch prices were going to kick in as they had done in the middle of last year. Just a few weeks ago, we received word from the state of Connecticut via this memo that I've provided for you in your packet about these, the funding. And the stable funding is $16 million that is being given to the state of Connecticut from federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. And that money has been made, money has been made available to the Connecticut State Department of Education, who's created this program. And essentially, what the stable funds will enable school districts to do is provide free breakfast for every student, one free, one free meal for breakfast for every student who chooses to get it. It's reimbursable funds from the state. And what it also does is, right now, there are three different tiers of, of lunch prices. In a, in a, in a normal world, when pre-pandemic, students would either be paying full price for lunches, they might be, and if they qualified for it, they could potentially pay reduced price for lunches, or they might qualify for free lunches. What the stable funds are also doing is, they are making anyone who qualifies for reduced lunch prices to, to be basically is, they are making anyone who qualifies for reduced lunch prices to, to be basically get lunches for free. Again, another great benefit. So it is something that, when we found out about it, we opted into this, and it was just something that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. And it, right now, they are saying that this funding will be available to school districts for the duration of the year. So it was last year, we had that period of time where it was like, we used it until it ran out, and then once it ran out, it went away and, and it kicked back in. As it stands, they're telling us, no, the funding will last for the entire school year. So I think it's a great program. I'm excited to be able to do, provide for our students for breakfast, for all of our students, and for those families who would benefit from it, who would qualify for reduced lunch.
That's great. Is there a motion that goes along with it?
There's, there's not, because we opted into it. We, it was, it was something that we had, I can't remember where the date.
The 18th.
The 18th of August was when we had to make sure that we opted into it. We knew we were going to have a board meeting.
Yeah, okay. Is there, was that somebody, was that a board member trying to chime in? Okay. Okay, so the only thing I would just throw in there, the taking opportunity to plug something, and I'm sure it's probably not terribly different in Andover or Marlboro, but I don't know the facts, but I do know that the Hebron Food Pantry here in town is, is having a significant problem keeping the shelves even remotely full. And there's a, I got, the feedback I got from the folks who run that is that it's a combination of an increased need and decreased funding and decreased donations. So, you know, to the extent that anybody isn't aware of that or has the ability to help in that event, and I'm sure, again, and I don't know what Marlboro or Andover does, I live in Hebron, so, but I'm sure it's not a very terribly different scenario. So, you know, just keeping in mind that not only is there food challenges here at school, but there's food challenges, and they're getting worse apparently across the three towns. So it's unfortunate, but I, like I said, just make sure that, to the extent that somebody wasn't aware, then maybe they're aware now. Go ahead, Sue.
Colin, how are we communicating this information to the parents?
So our communication is going to go out either later this week or early next week, making sure that we inform, inform parents about the fact that this is available for them. The other thing, obviously, we always send information out about how to apply for free and reduced lunch, and we're going to make sure that we include, obviously, that information in the communication that goes out to families.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about that? All right, which brings us to 10.2, summer facilities projects update, which is enclosure 10.2A.
So, you know, again, I highlighted the amount of work that was done, but I did want to make sure that we recognized all of the, the summer facilities projects. So enclosing your board packet is a comprehensive list of the projects that have been going on over the past couple of months. It's broken, the list is broken down by capital projects, capital non-recurring projects, and then also just a comprehensive list of tasks that are completed by our own custodial maintenance staff. And as I said, it is an extensive list, and I just wanted to reiterate my praise for Mike Schlehofer and his staff for the work that they do to accomplish all of that in a, in a very truncated period of time. I, I remember showing up to, to work the day after graduation, and I was like, I thought I was at like a construction zone. It was like, literally the day after, and I said, I think I made a comment to Eva, and she looked at me, she's like, well, what do you think we're going to do?
No rest.
And, you know, I know I've talked to Heather a couple of times, that, you know, you take your daily walks, and it has been a, like, it's like a beehive of activity.
They were actually, it might have been the sidewalk people, on Sunday mornings, they were here. And, and they're early. They're like, oh, we don't want to mess the heat, you know? But there was always something happening.
Did I read this right? The walk-in coolers finally showed up?
Finally showed up.
All right, so then we can do the floor.
It's scheduled for tomorrow.
Oh, all right, wow.
We're good.
We've been talking about walk-in coolers since I got on the board, so, I mean, it's been that long. Yeah, okay, cool. Great. Okay, any questions or comments?
Indoor air quality HVAC review.
They completed the review last week, sorry, no, I want to say Monday. No, today's Monday. So yeah, last week, Thursday. They walked out the door on Thursday, so the report is not finished as of yet.
Sure. Well, that'll be, I think that'll be very interesting, because that's an very extensive reviews, I understand it. And we'll see where we stand.
Okay. All right, that brings us to 10.3, which is the subcommittee meeting calendar for 2023 and 2024, enclosure 10.3A.
Yeah, so that enclosure is a draft of a subcommittee meeting calendar for the 2324 school year. The schedule, it really follows the same one that we've used over the past couple of years. I modeled last year's off of the one from the previous year. The, as the board can see, there are meetings that I have tentatively scheduled for the beginning of September as well. I'll communicate with the subcommittee chairs to discuss possible agenda items. I've already had a conversation with facility subcommittee meeting chair. We will have a meeting, and I'll talk to the others as well, and figure out if there are going to be agenda items. I felt it was better to put those, put, put them on the calendar and then discuss if there's a need for those with the different subcommittee meetings, uh, different subcommittee chairs. So we're ready to jump right back into the fray. No rest.
Is there, do you give any thoughts on maybe trying to program in the budget meetings?
I think last year it worked out. We were able to work around the budget meetings. So I think if we had, the good thing is, is that the subcommittee meetings do have a degree of flexibility.
No, no, I mean, the subcommittee meetings are fine. I'm just saying.
Oh, 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 oh.
I mean, I know they're not subcommittee, but they, they're, they, they compete with the, with the final.
Why don't we, it's a great call. Why don't, why don't that's something that Eva and I draft and have prepared for the September meeting? My apologies, I misunderstood.
It's not a subcommittee meeting, but I mean, it competes for some of those subcommittee nights, or it did in the past, so.
The, the one thing, obviously, that I did not schedule, I have the four, four of the five subcommittees. The other one is the negotiation subcommittee. We'll have one negotiations this year. I would anticipate, starting just from a timeline perspective, probably around like December-ish, it's going to be our negotiations with our non-serviced staff. So I'll be in touch with that subcommittee.
I just wanted to mention that it looks, it looks like Mondays and Wednesdays are fairly clear during the budget time period, so I would suggest that those days be used for the most part.
In full disclosure, this board, the board members themselves were incredibly thoughtful about not holding these extra meetings on Mondays, in some part for me, but that's not an issue anymore. So if Mondays are, anyway. But Mondays and Wednesdays probably are fair game. But in the past, just, everybody was really nice about not adding more Mondays, because Mondays were terrible things, specifically for me. But yeah, you're right, Mondays and Wednesdays are pretty fair. And I think in the past, Sue could probably tell you, but I think in the past, Mondays were, there was extra Monday nights, wasn't it?
Yeah. So just, I mean, one of the things that is not reflected, I believe, on this calendar are the board meetings passed either January or December.
Yeah, because they won't get voted on.
Because they don't get voted upon until the meeting. So those meetings will get filled in, the once a month Monday.
With the new board.
Yes, with the new board.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions, concern? All right, which brings us to 10.4, which are the financials, 10.4A, the year-end financials report.
So in your packet, you're going to find 10.4A. Basically, this is unaudited, so I'm going through right now, and I'm finalizing the year-end report for the state of Connecticut that has to be finalized by September 1st, otherwise there's a fine if it's not finalized. So I'm projecting that there's a net favorable position of 1.647.880, less a projected shortfall in revenue of $163,154, leaving a revised net, projected net favorable position of 1.4 million. The key factors that were driving the net projection or the net favorable projection is the amount of staff movement that we had. We have an available amount of $818,413 just in unallocated personnel, which basically I rolled up any available salaries that were not being utilized and the benefits that went with them. In addition, we had a driver shortage for bus drivers, so due to combined runs, we had some substantial savings there. But in your memo, you can see the highlighted areas of where the majority of the money was. The revenue shortfall was, it's a blessing and a curse at the same. So our high-class special ed movement of students, so if they move out of district, we do not get the money that we budgeted for revenue, so that's where the shortfall came from there. In addition, during the audit, it was recommended that the way that we transfer the $35,000 for utilities plus from food service to the district is not considered, not necessarily a revenue, so it's handled a different way. So moving forward to this, the fiscal year that we're in, as of July 1st, that was reduced during the budget process, so we won't have that again. So at year end or at audit, and once we finalize the audit, the board during budget season will be able to keep 2%, which is estimated to be $609,720. The remainder would go back to the three towns as an offset credit to their budgets. Again, in my packet, I was just going through what was remaining and what needed to be done, but I think Alan basically did a good job of explaining everything that Michael has done. So I'm going to let that one go and ask if anyone has any questions in regards to what I may have presented as.
No. Oh, I guess I have a question. So, I mean, based on what you just communicated, as far as, as far as the planning, which is the budget, it really wasn't anything that we, you always want to take a step back and say, did we sandbag on something that was a budget item? And that's not really what we're communicating. What we're communicating is, excuse me, there was some unforeseen, the staff, you can't really project, you can only project what we're scheduled for. And then pretty much the rest of this stuff is just things that changed throughout the course. So it was, I mean, I, I know that that's, I learned Eric has some experience being on the finance board down in Andover, and so some of the times he, he takes the time to explain things in these meetings that I forget is actually some people do watch occasionally. And so I do think it's important that we just, you know, kind of, to his point, when we were talking about the budget, making sure that we're cognizant of the fact that people are watching and trying to understand what we're doing. And in this circumstance, just being clear that these are things that we really couldn't have changed in last year's budget, and certainly probably not anything we could change in this next year's budget. Okay. Any comments from the board? Okay.
10.4B is the budget appropriation transfers. So for year end, I need the board to review these transfers and to act upon them, because we're not supposed to end any object code that's the last three digits in a negative position. We have to make sure that everything's fully funded. So these nine transfers total $658,444.99. The sheet, the memo has, this is the summary version. The individual transactions are the backup to that. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. But I will follow our motion.
Okay. Are there any questions about these transfers? Okay. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve the year-end budget appropriation transfers for fiscal year 2022, 2023 in the amount of $658,444.99 as presented.
So moved.
I got Eric as the motion, Sue, I'll take you as the second.
Sure.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Any, anything else? Anybody else? So when it comes to money, I like to make sure that we do, especially sizable money, that we do a roll call vote. So hearing no other discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Carrie is not present. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Gabe?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Kirsten?
Yes.
Thank you, Sue.
Yes.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that passes unanimously. Okay.
So 10.4C. So in finalizing the capital non-recurring projects and/or the CIP projects, but this one is in particular to just capital non-recurring for the audit and making sure everything was finalized. As you might remember or recall, that DOT project was finally closed there. So we have some available funds there. It totaled $72,531.78, and I would respectfully request that the board transfer that into, or reallocate, sorry, that it would be a reallocation into the CNR unallocated fund. So that would be our little, little nest egg there, that if something comes down the line, we can reallocate it to a project later and.
Like fracking a well twice?
Yes.
Okay, so let's consider a motion, and then we can talk about it if we need to. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the reallocation of $72,531.78 available from the capital non-recurring DOT project account into the capital non-recurring unallocated account. Michael, take us the motion, and Eric, will you second? Thank you. Okay, is there any comments? Question? All right, hearing none, again, we'll do a voice vote. I'm sorry, a roll call. Carrie? Not present. Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Gabe?
Yes.
Thank you, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Pam?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Thank you. Sue?
Yes.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you for that. And so 10.4D is your food service monthly sales and expenditure reports. And again, this is unaudited. This is for the final for June 2023. So as you can see on page two of that, which is the spreadsheet, we actually have a net income of $36,358.71. Will be a lovely place to be. And again, I speak to the stabilization funds that we will be receiving. And so I, I think it's a good, it's a win-win situation for everybody, and hopefully there'll be money coming down the pike to let everybody use, especially if it keeps getting worse instead of better.
I agree.
Are there any questions? But I think, no. All right, 10.4E is basically your student activity accounts, and they are in balance with the bank. And I'm glad we can answer any questions if the board has any on the student. And 10.4F, which is the STIF account. So this is actually for June and July. I figured I write one less memo. The total dividend reinvested for both months was $2,968.35. I was actually quite impressed with the yield, the daily yield amount. It's doing really well. So, but if there are any questions, I'd gladly answer them for the work.
It's unfortunate, because it's not a great statement on the economy in general, but for our, for our school funds, it's not, it's not the worst thing in the world. No, I, I have a comment. I'll just say that the board that was involved in approving, moving that money over, obviously it was a good, we were a little concerned about, you know, whether or not that was a, a stable place to park money that we, you know, we're going to need down the road. But I, I thought, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it was Eva that brought up the suggestion, and then everybody else kind of adding in to move us across the line. I don't know, what is it, what is it generating so far?
I can total it out, but I'm going to guess probably closer to $8,000, $9,000.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's real money that can go towards something that, you know, we wouldn't have been able to do. So that's great. Awesome. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. That's it for me.
All right. That moves us on to item 11, which is the committee reports, facilities, safety and transportation. Mike?
We get together on September 5th? Talking about the appropriation amount that we had earmarked for the evaluation of the facility for the capital.
That's right, yes. Thank you. Okay. Good?
Yep.
Any questions on, for facilities? Finance? Anything?
We'll be meeting on September 7th. We're enjoying our lack of, I could study here for a freaking time. And we'll be charging our batteries.
All right, sounds good. Negotiations hasn't met, I don't think, but they'll appear shortly. Policy? I know Carrie's not here. Eric or Gabe, that do you have anything to add?
Yeah, it looks like next meeting's on the 5th, same day as facilities, so we'll be, what sort of policies are going into the.
Yeah, there was a daunting list.
There is a daunting list. Yeah.
Shitman and Goodwin, so we can feast on. Shipping, good land, so we can feast on those.
Yeah, 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 okay. Well, I like the fact that you guys prioritized even some of the more challenging ones, and certainly the ones that are probably likely to be more, you know, more problematic earlier than later, but that, I like the prioritization of the list, too. Okay, which brings us to Program and Communication. Mary, anything?
No, if we have agenda items, we will be meeting next on September 7th.
Great. Which leads us to Facilitators. Carrie is not here for CAPE. I would just say Easton continued to meet over the summer. The only thing that they really is, they continue to try and improve on their kind of financial standing and just keep going through the same struggle that I think they do every year, which is to try and get to the point where they, they can continue to provide the services and things that they do, which, again, every time I have another board meeting with them, I'm surprised, I'm shocked with a new thing that they provide that we don't, as a board member here in this school, I never see, that they're here doing it, or they're providing that service or whatever. So they're, they're pretty important in general to, to the region that they serve. So it's, it's pretty eye-opening and awesome to have them there. Sue, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, in the absence of Carrie, I know that I received some emails about the CAPE Conference in November, and I think there's early registration. So if anybody wanted, you know, to go, I would, you know, submit that request in because I think we get a discount, right, Colin, if we register early?
We do. I believe that Jessica had sent an email out to board members. I'd spoken to her about it, I can confirm. If she hasn't, yes, we can get an early registration. If she did not send that email out to you all, I know we had discussed it, and I can have her do that, and if it's something that people wanted to do. It's, it's usually the, the event is the Friday and, the Friday and Saturday, the week of the week before, the week leading up to Thanksgiving at that point.
Yes.
So.
If you, if you're, I know, we, I think, I'm not sure if Kirsten, you were around for last year's, or Pam, maybe, but if you haven't had an opportunity to go to do it, I've done it, I think I went twice. It was, it was interesting, and I think it's a good thing for a board member if you have the ability to go. And just to make sure everybody's clear, there's funding that is programmed into the budget for making this kind of professional development available for board members. So you really just have to let Colin and Jessica know, and then they can coordinate signing up for you and all that. So it's not something you have to pull out of your pocket.
Yep.
Okay. So that brings us to item 12, which again, brings us to Public Comment, and bear with me. Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcome. The Public Comments segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the Board of Education may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the Board of Education is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the Board of Education is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. So at this point, is there one physically present that would like to present a public comment? Okay, there's only one person physically present, she's shaking her head no. So just go back up to our digital attendance. If you would like to make public comment, just make yourself known, either raise your digital hand or speak up. And I'm getting the left and right from Eric, which means no, which means that we will move on to item 13, which is informational items, which is 13.1, Calendar of Events. Colin, anything?
Yeah, so as I stated earlier, the big event is twofold, Convocation and PD, everybody coming back and breathing some life into the building on the 28th, and then a whole lot of life coming in on the 31st. And I am mourning the loss of another summer, but I'm excited about the start of a school year, so it's good.
Can I just, how long is the Convocation?
I wouldn't anticipate it being much more than an hour-ish, hour and 15 minutes maybe at the most. It's some welcoming remarks, recognition of years of service, going over some PD stuff.
Ethan's usually pretty entertaining.
Yes, yes. So, so I believe that Jessica had sent out a communication to board members asking if people were going to attend. I would just say, I would love to have board members be there. I know Joe was able to be there last year, Mike was able to be there last year. If it works, great, if it doesn't, I certainly understand that. But just let Jessica know so that we can make sure that we, we're coming.
I do think the staff and the, and the teacher group and everybody, I think they appreciate that, to the extent you can participate, if you go. I do, a lot of them came up afterwards and said, I appreciate you being here, that kind of thing. So if you can, it's worth going to.
Mike, can I say one thing, Mike?
Yeah, please, go ahead, Sue.
I received my packet in the mail, and I'm like, oh my word, is this meeting going to go to 11 o'clock because it was such a big package? It's 7:30, great job.
7:25.
It's not over yet, don't jinx me.
I'm hanging up soon, so.
It's over for you. So that brings us to 13.2, which is the Student in School and Out of School Suspension Report. Any, clearly no new trends since June?
No, no. No, it, you know, it shows the totality of disciplinary action taken against students for the year. This is the format that board members requested, so I think it's beneficial to have to. The layout of the entire region.
Yep, yeah, I agree. Okay, and that brings us to item 16, which is an adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Come on, don't make me work for it, Gabe, okay?